This is NHTV Two, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank everybody. I mean, I'd like to welcome everybody. Hi, thank you, sir. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody for coming to town tonight. So I'd like to call November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting in the North Haven Board of Education to order at six thirty P M. I'd like to look at the approval of the October tenth, twenty twenty-four regular Board of Education meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're gonna go right to the student representative reports. We're gonna start with... We're gonna start with the juniors today. How's that? Want you to introduce yourself to everybody?
I'm Rogan Parkwatch.
And what's your name? A little bit about yourself?
I'm a junior representative, and I want to be a world-leading researcher when I grow up. I think that's the best direction I can give.
That's very good. You have any activities at school now? Maybe plays or sports or...
I play tennis.
Nice.
So I'll take it away. So the seniors had an advisory to learn about the senior-to-senior breakfast, which is being held December twelfth. That's the event where our senior class serves breakfast to North Haven senior citizens and their relatives to our seniors. The homecoming dance is November twenty-second from seven to ten in the high school gym. And the junior post-secondary planning night is on Thursday, November twenty-first at six P M. at the North Haven High School Theater. Brittany Bonch from Albertus Magnus College will share insights on preparing for college and exploring career opportunities. This is a great chance to gather some helpful information to support your child's future.
Thank you for that. Joe?
The second marking period began on November first. Our annual pep rally is gonna take place Wednesday, eleven twenty-seven at eleven fifteen. This is a great event to showcase the students' school spirit and support all of our athletes. It's also a half day on the day of the pep rally. And sophomore meetings with counselors are ongoing. These are opportunities for sophomores to ensure they are on track academically, explore ways to engage with the school community, make a plan to gain community service hours, and connect with support resources.
Awesome. Thank you very much. You guys are free to stay or go as you see fit.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to the public comment session, which is the non-agenda items. I'd just like to make a couple of quick statements. Number one, all comments, please direct to the board. You can speak about anything you want, as long as it's school-related. And other than that, we can just add your name and your address, sign in, and speak your piece.
Hi, my name is Anna Cunningham. I live at thirteen Monroe Street here in North Haven. I'm a mom of three students, two at Green Acres and one at the middle school. The reason I wanted to come tonight was just to talk to you guys about the start of the school year. The last two years, it started on a Monday, as opposed to the Wednesday that it had been for, I don't know how many years, but at least since my oldest had started kindergarten. And I just felt like the last couple of years, it's really put sort of a negative spin on the start of the school year. It's been very difficult for my kids. And I know that it's been really difficult for a lot of other children as well. Every parent I've talked to, my friends, teachers that I'm friends with in the district, have all expressed not just, "Yeah, it's okay," really not enjoying that the school year starts with the full five days, aside from the fact that it's a long week to get through. For me, one of the biggest and most important reasons, and that I've heard echoed from teachers as well, is that that first week is really the, you know, the start of the school year. Everyone's trying to get acclimated, and there's not any schoolwork being done. You know, maybe in the middle, in the high school level, they can, but in the elementary school, it's five days where they're going through the motions and getting used to it, but just limping along, especially those young ones, Thursday, Friday, you know, they're kind of throwaway days. You know, the three days is, I think, a good one, but the five seems to be a little bit of overkill. And then on the flip side, too, you know, I know we have to leave room for snow days, but, you know, the school year ends so early. If we don't have a lot of snow days, if there's just a couple, that can leave families up to two weeks of time to have to find childcare before the camps in town start. And I know that there are families that really rely, especially on the playground camp, which is a nice affordable option for their family. They could spend almost the same amount of money in two weeks trying to get someone in their home if they need to, or arranging with family members. Hopefully, they have that opportunity. But it definitely makes it difficult on the flip side as well. I know it's just two days at the end that would add, but it's still two days. You know, that does make a difference. So I just wanted to let you guys know as well. I did email the board in the beginning of the year, a few members of the board. I looked through the minutes. There was no discussion in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three about why that was change was being made. So this is more about starting that conversation. I would love to have if there was any information that I don't have, because like I said, I know a lot of people, and they've all said they'd be very willing to write the board and let them know their personal views as well. But if there was some information that I could have as a way to understand the change, I think that, you know, I would like to hear it. I don't know if this is a sort of question-answer session here that anybody is able or willing to do.
You know, if you go by the book, it's not a question-answer, but, you know, I really don't want for that. I always answer as many questions as we can, try to help have a little dialogue back and forth. That, you know, makes it easier. There are many things that we consider when we start the school year: snow days, difficulty of people getting daycare. So there's a bunch of pros and cons. I think it's just, we felt it was easier to just get it started in terms of whether it was a Wednesday or a Monday. But the Monday, get it started and go, is really... About all I can really say about that. It wasn't any other decision, other than you gotta pick a day to start. One of these already a crime day.
Well, I know that the date itself is, I guess, important. But like, don't you think, though, that like, starting like what I said? Like, I know that my kids did no schoolwork in that first five days. It's, "Oh, here, make a get-to-know-you poster. Get through the procedures." And by Thursday, Friday, like I said, the elementary school kids are so tired that I have a friend that teaches kindergarten. She's like, "It's all you can do just to get them through and get through those days without them falling apart." And I know, like, you know, middle school, high school students, yeah, they could get work started. But my daughter, when I was talking to her about this tonight, she's like, "Oh, we had a teacher that said, you know what, I'd love to," but there were already five or six kids out sick by Thursday, Friday. So I mean, I don't have access to that information.
Well, that, I don't, we don't really have that information. We don't really go by that anyways, because that's one of those things where kids are gonna be sick and not sick, you know? And as far as, you know, no schoolwork, there's always... Schoolwork isn't always math and English. Schoolwork is adjustment. And at that age, getting to, you know, learn how to share, where to sit, structure, all these different things. And sometimes when you start on that Wednesday, Thursday, by the time you leave and come back Monday, it's forgotten, and you're starting all over again. So it does seem maybe that there's not a lot getting done, but there actually is a lot of things getting done. And at that age, it's more, I hate to say the word behavioral, but structured-wise.
Well, procedural. They go through a lot of the procedural actions.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be misconstrued as anything else. It's patterns and structure.
Right, but you would agree, though, that the teachers don't have less curriculum to get through just because they now have those five days. They really do not have as much opportunity to get into curriculum in those few days. So before, they'd have the three days to run through procedures, get kids acclimated, and then Tuesday, they can hit the ground running after Labor Day. Now, it's five days, and like I said, it's a struggle by the end of the week. Those kids are exhausted. They're tired. My kids, they couldn't even enjoy Labor Day weekend because they were just trying to get their stamina back up to be able to start on Tuesday.
I'm not gonna disagree that it's a struggle, but I would say this: It has to happen at some point.
So why not Wednesday? That's what I'm saying. Why not consider...
Again, because, and we can relook at it, but again, Wednesday through Friday, when Monday comes, they haven't gotten a little structure down. We have to almost... You're taking a step back.
Well, I would encourage you to speak to teachers about this, because they do not have that same feeling.
Okay, we can do that.
And I just, like I said, this is about a conversation, starting a conversation. I know that this is when you guys start to look at the calendar for next year. And I know that there are many people, everyone I've talked to, you know, that they all have expressed the same thing that I have, is that it's a very difficult start to the school year. It's almost demoralizing that last weekend of the summer is, you know, my kids were, it was like they were at a funeral, you know? It was very, very difficult.
We don't want them coming to school thinking they're going to a funeral.
Well, just so you know, in discussing this as well, my fifth grader came with me, and he felt very strongly about writing his own opinion. He thought that hearing from a student might be something, and I did not want to discourage him.
No, you should not discourage him. Oh, you gotta give me your name, young man. Give me your name, young man.
Hello, I am Anderson Crying.
Your name.
Anderson Crying.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Anderson Crying. I'm from the Green Acres fifth grade, and I believe that the school year should start on a Wednesday rather than Monday. Most kids hate starting school on a Monday, and it's difficult for so many kids across North Haven. Here are two more reasons. One, I felt overwhelmed thinking about the five whole days, especially for the younger students. Two, the first week is often getting to know each other, and the five days isn't necessary to get to know each other. Thank you for listening to me and understanding my point of view.
How old are you? How old are you?
I am eleven.
Well, I applaud your bravado to get up here and speak in public at eleven years old. It is very difficult to do, so good job on your part. Well, listen, we can take into consideration, like we do every year, what we're doing, how we start. You know, the one thing we always try to do is to make the educational process the easiest and the best for the kids. That's always forefront in what we try to do. So we can take that into consideration. You know, I would suggest that if you feel the need to write a letter, please do. We get them all defined. So you can write, you know, Patrick Struck, superintendent. You can write anyone on the board. And, you know, if we don't hear from people, we don't know.
Okay.
So, you know, we come up here, and we try to do the best we can with the information that we talk about. Maybe we don't see every angle. So please, you know, submit it, and we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no promises, but I'll look at it for sure. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no other comment, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. The retirement of Jean McFarland, the administrative assistant at North Haven High School. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Ratification of the contract between the North Haven Board of Education and the North Haven Education Association, July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. May I have a motion to approve the contract between the North Haven Board of Education and the North Haven Education Association, which is the teachers' union, dated July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Have a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I was part of that process, and I want to say that working with our union was a pleasure. You know, situations like this can get difficult, but it was not at all. Conversations were very respectful, always putting the needs of students at the forefront, and it was a really good process. So I appreciate all the work that they do. There were a lot of people from the staff involved in the process, and everyone was equally vested. And so it was a nice process, nice and smooth process.
Very good. Awesome.
If I may, Ron?
Sure.
I just wanna, I was not part of the process this year, but I wanted to say thank you to all of our teachers. They make such a big difference here in North Haven, and they take care of our babies. And I just, I really appreciate all that they do. And that's it. Thank you.
They make our job easy, so I appreciate that myself. One of the things we're looking into right now is I was talking to superintendent about the speaker system here. So we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do, just to make it easier for people to speak, so everyone can hear and that we can be heard from the board. So just kind of hang tough with us with what we have for now until we kind of get that figured out. Let's do the reports on the standing committees. Where are you? I'm sorry. Did I just...? Oh, Jesus. Skip right over. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Apologies. Now we can do the standing committees. Marty, you got anything for ACES?
Yeah, we had a meeting this afternoon, this morning, yeah, this afternoon. They presented a program called ACES Services, which they outline many of the programs that they have available to school systems, to towns, and programs they use, and also developed with AI in mind for future activities. The packet they gave us contains pricing on tuition rates for towns for twenty-five, twenty-six. They are partnering with Enterprise Automobile to get new vans, sell off their old ones, and have the van serviced on a regular basis, and that's been working out very well for them. They've also been working on salary contracts with several of their groups and changes to their health and insurance policies, like everybody else is gonna be doing this year. They're working with ACA. They purchased property in New Haven next door to ECA, I'm sorry. And like everything else in New Haven, they ran into a stone wall. The building they bought is in the protected area, and they were informed that they cannot touch the front facade of the building under any circumstances. So now they're trying to figure out how to get around that and the possibility of buying another piece of property so they can expand the office space that they want to work with. Bassett Road, if you've gone by the area, is getting further and further along. They hope to have windows put in in the next couple of weeks. And they're also working with Gateway for the space that they're renting in the building. They're also working on changes for enrollment in the magnet school program. Apparently, over the last couple of years, there's been an issue with the number of students that each town could provide to their magnet school. And that's now been eliminated, because I guess they had a problem with Waterbury in particular, where they were only allowed to have five students from Waterbury attend the magnet school. And so they've worked out a program with the state where that's been eliminated. So now it's unlimited numbers of students can go into their magnet school program. All right, they're working on a program, and I said, in the ACES Service Program, they're developing a learning packet for teachers on how to develop programs and use programs with AI, because that's becoming the new big area. Also, the drivers are being trained, as you may have seen ACES vans going around. The drivers are going to instructional programs on how to work with students. And in particular, if they have a student that they work with during the day as a teacher, they are dealing with that program. And they're also, again, going through safety programs with the schools that they work with and the various teachers that they have because of changes in safety needs.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Marty? Okay, moving on to curriculum instruction planning.
Yeah, the committee met Wednesday morning. A new club, the Greek Club, was approved at the high school. A course, a new course was approved. It's the Yukon ECE English one thousand seven was approved. And Mrs. McKenna shared the agreement for the Greek Studies that we approved last month, and she's working on solidifying the agreement with the Hellenic College of Holy Cross. And that's all I have.
Do we have any questions for Joe? Moving on to finance and operations.
Yeah, we met tonight, and we discussed the budget, transportation, and reserve accounts, as well as the upcoming food services bid process. I'm sure Christian's gonna get into more detail about this during his report. But the TLDR, Too Long Didn't Read, is kind of that we're pacing consistently with prior years right now. Last year, at this point, we had utilized forty-four point one percent of the budget, and this year, we've utilized forty-four percent of the budget. So we're right on track, even with astronomical electric costs.
Somebody have any questions for Amanda? North Haven Education Foundation?
Thank you. The Ed Foundation met yesterday. The members approved a grant to fund a new literary magazine at the high school. It was actually a student-initiated grant, so it was, I think, their first student-initiated grant that they've ever had, so it was very exciting. And they will begin planning their trivia night after the holiday break, which will be held on Friday, April fourth, and there will certainly be more information to follow.
Do we have any questions for Patrick? Okay, we were with the policies. We have a first read, series three thousand, business and non-instructural operations. Policy number three one five one A, community use of school facilities. The second read, series four thousand, personnel. Prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Series five thousand, students, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Approval, policy number five one one eight point one, students, homeless, children, and youth. I have a motion to approve policy five one one eight point one, students, homeless, children, and youth.
I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Let's move to the ad hoc athletic committee.
Yep, so in your packets, what you'll find is a whole big part of this policy that references the cost of the use of facilities across our district. I know Patrick and Christian and Steve Blumenthal and Phil Diana, right? Is there anybody else? Maybe I just wanna work together to come up with these numbers, comparing numbers from other districts and seeing what would best fit our town. So I know that those were meetings that you had without me present, so I don't know if there's anything that you want, anything else you want to share with us about that?
We also like to thank Joyce as well for providing us all the information from our Dirk peers, because they are, you know, sometimes tough to find in their websites. But, yeah, we came to find, and I think discussed this in ad hoc as well, that when trying to look at other districts to compare where they are, our facilities are different, what we offer here in North Haven are different, and the way their cost structure is in each and every district is different. So Christian, myself, Steve, Phil, and I, we just tried to come up with a reasonable increase to what we're charging for each of our facilities, from turf fields down to, you know, classrooms at the elementary school. So this is truly just a draft and very much open to board discussion at great length if needed. So, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
I was glad to see that we have a keen eye on keeping costs down for town nonprofit organizations. I think it's really important that we make facilities accessible for town groups. One thing that did catch my eye, though, is like the use of the auditorium. It was stated that the high school auditorium, if it wasn't during regular hours, we would charge town government for the use. And I just want to clarify on this. So like, as an example, every April, we have a budget town public hearing at the high school auditorium. I just want to make sure that we're not gonna charge the town money to utilize those facilities.
We will not.
Okay. Good, good.
We'd be awesome on that one. Okay, we all set with that? Any other questions?
Can I, I also, I had similar questions.
Yeah.
I had a similar question, but I also wanted to know, it said that, similar to what she said, I'm just trying to find the language. It had to do with outside of the normal, like, when custodians are there. For example, when like youth basketball is practicing at each of our, you know, elementary schools during the fall, is that during normal custodial time? So because there's night custodians, so then they aren't charged for that because there's somebody there? So you're really just talking when it's like a holiday and the school is closed and nobody's there, or the weekend, right? But on the weekends, we also host basketball games at various gyms. Like, is that then when they're charged? Yes, so weekends, they are charged. Okay.
Because we are responsible for paying for the custodians to be on duty, so we are not charging anything in addition. We're just trying to break even with what we charge.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's just an important point for the community to understand, is that we don't have a lot of extra budgets, so we want to make facilities available for town groups, but we can't like sacrifice buying beakers at the high school for science in order to make this happen. So it's pretty bare bones.
Yeah, I know Randy spent a lot of time getting that together, so I appreciate all your efforts, Randy.
Thank you.
Rather than...
It was a team effort, for sure. It's a long time coming.
You can say that all you like, but I know you did a lot of work. Any other questions about the ad hoc? I like to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So Melinda and I will be sharing a combined report tonight to kind of share some really great news. We just received, I think it was last week, or I think it was last weekend, the Accountability Index update from the Connecticut State Department of Education. And at each of your places, there is a, about eleven or twelve slides, a little packet. And just so, for next month, we will have a presentation board available for the public. There are copies up where you can sign in for public comment. So if you'd like to take a copy of the presentation, it is up there. So the District Accountability Index update. So the Connecticut Department of Ed releases these reports annually for each public school and district within the state. And as you can see on the second slide, we always include our vision of a graduate, because that really drives our work and is a result of, you know, these great scores that we're going to report on in just a moment. So just a little history about the Accountability Index. They were first issued back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and they were used as a foundation for the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was replaced in twenty seventeen by No Child Left Behind. So they've been around for a few years. They did take a break from accountability reporting during the pandemic, but this is our third year back from that pandemic break. You'll see in some of the slides. So the accountability reports, they track growth of students over time and look at indicators really beyond test scores. They look at art access, absenteeism, physical fitness, graduation indicators. They're all taken into account when these reports are put together. And the reports also account for performance of student groups, such as what they call all students, which as it defines as all students. And then there are also groups with high needs, which might be students who are identified in special education, students who receive free and reduced lunch, or students who are identified as multilingual. So Melinda's gonna jump in a little bit here.
Okay, I'm gonna take you through slide four. So a school or a district can earn up to one hundred percent of the available percentage points. So for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, North Haven earned eighty point two percent of our available percentage points, which outplaces the state of Connecticut by about ten percent. And this is the most percentage point we have earned since this measure returned after the pandemic. The next slide looks at the metrics in terms of ratings, and many factors are taken into account. One of these factors is participation rates, as well as identified gap outliers. That means differences between different groups. Not meeting a participation rate or receiving a gap outlier can impact how schools are assigned categories. So the participation rate is a little bit tricky for us. There really isn't an opt-out option. But in certain circumstances, parents will opt their student out via a notice or communication with the school principal. And then later on, we may see the results of that as our scores are sent out. As you can see in this school categories chart for twenty twenty-four, Green Acres and Ridge Road have moved up a category. Green Acres now being a category one score. And each of the other four schools maintain their ranking from the twenty twenty-three accountability ranking. The State Department identifies schools with distinction within their accountability reporting. And the chart on slide seven shows how to reach that criteria. And schools can qualify by reaching one of these top three areas, either overall... And schools can qualify by reaching one of these top three areas, either overall performance, growth of all students, or growth of high need students. And coupled with that, they have ninety-five percent participation rate and don't have any gaps. If you look at slide eight, you can see that this year, three of the elementary schools, Clintonville, Green Acres and Ridge Road, were ranked schools with distinction. Slide nine, we highlight Clintonville's growth. Oh, Montwies. Montwies, right.
Did we say that right?
Yeah, it's okay. Thank you, Montwies. Clintonville, Green Acres and Montwies were ranked schools with distinction. In slide nine, we wanted to highlight for you Clintonville's growth, especially as the overall percentage point earned was over ninety percent for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That score put them in line for category one ranking, but unfortunately, they missed the participation rate by point five, so they are a category two.
That growth, though, in one year, that's ridiculous.
Is amazing.
Sixteen percentage, that's amazing.
It's really, really amazing. If you look at slide ten, Joe Romanelli, our six-twelve math coordinator, he really dug into the Derg information to see how we performed against our Derg deep hairs. And there are seventy elementary schools within the Derg, and when looking at the rankings by the total percentage points earned, three of North Haven Elementary Schools ranked in the top eleven. Clintonville's second, Green Acres seventh, and Montwies eleventh. Ridge finished in the middle of the Derg at thirty-five, but is still considered a school with distinction due to their growth performance. So that's really just so wonderful to celebrate there. And when we dug into that information, a piece that was even more interesting to us is that there are some schools above us in the rankings, including the number one, that are pre-K three schools or different configurations. So they may only have one testing area, and they may also not have subgroups to even create gaps. So those are metrics that are all taken into account.
And just to finish off, we're always continuing to look towards improvement, and we're very pleased, but again, this is a one-year snapshot, the one score, I should say one accountability score, even though it does look at many different areas. But we continue to improve across, across the district at each of our schools, but we're looking at, especially at our curriculum this year at the elementary, because we're, we've adopted the bookworms and the, you know, science of reading mandate, that is an area of really paying a large amount of attention to, excuse me, as well as the coaching of our teachers within this curriculum, but also across the district. The middle school has really been focused on their co-teaching efforts between special ed and regular ed. And we're also providing many different intervention opportunities for our students, kindergarten through grade twelve.
And I think, you know, we're really proud of the performance of all six schools, and one of the things that we're really focusing in on is individual student growth, too, because the big picture looks great, but we also drill down into each, each classroom, each student to make sure that we're meeting their needs. If they're scoring in three and four, we want to make sure they're continuing to grow. Obviously, if they haven't met goal, we want to give them resources to make sure that they do. So it's really a global look at everything, and we cannot thank our students and our teachers and our administrators and our coordinators, who are really doing just amazing work in terms of moving the instruction and looking at data to help make, you know, impactful instructional decisions for our students, so.
We're really just reporting out for them. It's really their work.
Yep, certainly is. Lots to celebrate.
It is, it is. Another, just really a tremendous job by the teachers, being able to connect with their students in such a way that everyone is ready to go, ready to learn, and they're obviously doing that, so congratulations to everybody on that side. Fantastic. Do we have any questions?
Can I ask a couple? For the schools with distinction, Green Acres, Montwies and Ridge, what were the criteria that they met in order to become schools of distinction? Do you know? Sorry.
We do know.
I do.
It's through my piles here. Green Acres, actually, I, I will have to go back and look, because this sheet from the state does not say it specifically, Amanda, and I don't want to give it to you wrong.
Yeah, no, no problem. I mean, it's wonderful that those three achieved that distinction. That is fantastic. And actually, today, I think US News came out with rankings of elementary schools throughout the state of Connecticut, and three of our four were in the top fifteen percent of the state of Connecticut, which is awesome, because we're competing with other Dirgs. We're competing with Fairfield County there, who spend significantly more per student than we do. And I just want to say thank you so much to our teachers, our staff and our students for working so hard. These metrics are directional in nature, but I do like the accountability index because it does take into account not just grading structure, but it takes into account, as Patrick said, arts access, et cetera. So I do think this is a little bit of a better barometer, and I'm really happy to see it, to see us performing as well as we are.
And I think that to go to that piece, Amanda, it's really important to look at it from like a balanced perspective, too. There are some components that are a little bit out of our control, like, you know, absenteeism, and different factors are weighed in, but they give us points to work on with families and students, and like the same with the participation. So it really becomes around communicating and looking at all the factors.
And as much as we report out around how we have done it in comparison to the Derg, we're really seeing how we progress against ourselves as well. And we've said it before, we're, we're looking for consistency, just to continue to build on our successes, and there will always be areas where we need to take next steps, but if we look at the big picture, we continue to build on, on a strong foundation here.
And a little bit to go to what I said before about looking at the cohorts and a student year over year, that's what's really most important, because our groups change over time. And then particularly when we look at the high school, that's looking at a snapshot of different students over time, too, just eleventh graders taking some of the academic pieces, so.
Anybody else?
Just, obviously, it's very impressive, everything that you guys have reported. I just wanted to raise a point, maybe you could expand on it just a little bit, but especially after last meeting when we talked about test scores, and then now we're talking about the accountability report. Several times over the last month, I've heard people say there's too much of a focus on teaching towards the test, and it's taking away some of the flexibility of teachers to kind of just go off on an area where students, students or the class showed interest. And I think this kind of cuts into that argument a little bit, but just, I, I know I've been asked it a couple of times, if you can expand on it in any way, I think it'd be helpful for people to hear.
So I think I could, I could give you a kind of a broad sense on that. Our curriculum is written to match the standards, the core standards, so things we want students to know and be able to do by grade level, particularly in language arts, mathematics and science, right? We have social studies standards and frameworks as well, but that's our focus, and that's how we write our curriculum to align to that. So some of our success on the assessment shows that we have alignment to the proper priority standards and the, the standards that are tested. You know, we, we have worked really hard to ensure opportunities, particularly like across the four elementary schools or across teams in, at the middle school in sixth, seventh or eighth grade, with assured opportunities, learning opportunities, assessment opportunities. So I don't know if that answers it. Obviously, we do have to stay to teaching the standards as they're there, because if we're all over the place, then we don't have a commonality, right? And we can't assure that students have the building blocks from year to year. And that's a piece that, I don't know if you can remember, many years ago, we had different programs in different elementary schools, we had really different curricula going, and that was really having an impact, particularly as our, our students came together for the secondary experience. So we try to balance that and not have it be fully test-heavy or teaching to the test, but the standards are a reality that we have to address as well, and we have to make sure kids are prepared for each year that's coming up as well.
And, and as far as your work with like coordinators, because I know you meet with them on a regular basis, do you get any feedback where teachers are feeling like they're kind of constricted in what they have to do, or they have flexibility?
We do have a lot of discussions about that, and particularly, I'm thinking this is probably more of an elementary conversation in terms of like alignment and staying kind of close in terms of pacing, so that, you know, if we're going to give a unit assessment, we're within a week or so of each other, if you're in third grade at one school versus another school. We've had a lot more time talking about some of those pacing things as we're digging into bookworms, because that's new to us. So we're setting kind of the schedule, the scope and sequence to how we have to go about the instruction. So that is a give and take and conversation, and honestly, we're just, we're just to where we need to be the next time, because it's all new. We're uncovering it. Our literacy team is spending a lot of time digging into those materials so that they're really a solid unit ahead of the teachers to provide resources and materials. But we had just finished unit one of bookworms in many cases, and there was a survey sent out to all of the teachers that, actually, the language arts coordinator, K eight, and I have a meeting on Monday, where we'll kind of review some of that, and then that may impact some changes for next year as well. But we haven't lived it enough, long enough for me to really say much more about that.
I mean, the little bit that I've heard, it seems to be favorable, and people are enjoying.
It's an adjustment. And, and you know, it, it is hard to, to have some kind of alignment and to have to make sure that what we're teaching is tied to the standards. But there's a reality to that, that we have to balance out, too, with making sure that we're giving kids all kinds of experiences in school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you. Wonderful, that. DEIB?
So unfortunately, some issues came up at central office during our meeting last week, and we're going to have to reschedule. I apologize.
CSDE, accountability index update?
Just got it.
That's it? Assistant superintendent's report?
You got it. It was it.
Chief operating officer report?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Within your packets this evening, you did receive a copy of both my report as well as these financials for the month of October. The current budget financial reports that you received, we are currently on pace, very similar to where we were last year, as Ms. Gabriel spoke about in her report. There are three lines, though, I would like to point out, that we are keeping a close eye on right now. One is our certified part-time line, this is line one 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 O. This line is currently overdue to the need for required additional para support coverage during our school unified sports program, as well as our substitute athletic trainer fees. We actually had to provide additional para coverage during our unified sports, and we did have some teachers step up to do that. They are at a slightly higher rate, and they would impact that line. We will be able to account for that with budget adjustments at the end of the year. Line two zero one I, workers' compensation, this line is currently overdue based upon a seat of a vendor administrative fee that was unanticipated in relation to workman's comp. And so we just wanted to be very transparent, but we did not anticipate receiving that, and we will have to make adjustments as we balance out the budget at the end of the year. And finally, our certified professional tech line, this line accounts for fees associated with both our Quinnipiac internship program. This program provides Quinnipiac interns that act as building subs, as well as get their student teaching experience. We pay for that really beneficial relationship, as well as our Kelly substitute line. And so we have encumbered the full amount that we would have to pay Quinnipiac, and this line is going to be something that we'll need to address not only this current year, but look during the budget season, likely to increase in the twenty-five, twenty-six of November. Within your report is also my monthly budget transfer report for the month of October. Just a reminder that any of the transfer items that we're requesting approval on that are highlighted in yellow, do cross object code lines. You also have within your report my monthly reserve accounts. I know one of the things that we do watch carefully is our medical reserve account. Just want to be clear that right now, we are trending where we should be. The amount that you see there is where the reserve stands. It is adjusted to remove next month's contribution. As far as the other ones, I do want to just point out that the workers' compensation reserve reflects our cash balance. This is an account, Mr. Sal, I know you've addressed concerns on this as well. I think it's something that we're going to also have to be very mindful in the budget build process for, for next year, in really increasing that particular line. On to transportation. You all did receive, we did receive Mr. Hipsher's report Friday evening, after we had sent out the packet to the board, we forwarded that to you. You do have copies of his report at your seedings as well. As always, any questions you have for M&amp;J, I can certainly get them to him. I don't speak for M&amp;J Transportation, but if there are any questions in regards to M&amp;J's transportation report, I'm certainly all ears and making sure we present them to Mr. Hipsher. Additionally...
Let me just make sure.
Yeah, please.
No one has any questions about that right now? Okay. Thank you.
As you know, we are in an active RFP process for transportation vendor services, with our contract ending with our current vendor at the end of this year. We are going to be interviewing vendors next week, and then following this step, and we've conducted most of our reference checks as well. We'll be meeting both at the finance subcommittee for a debrief, as well as, you know, speaking in tonight's finance committee meeting, likely holding an executive session to present our findings from that process to the board in executive session, as it would involve a contract. With the final recommendation to be brought to the board for approval for transportation services for next year. Any questions there on that part? Great. Cafeteria and food services, we're continuing to do quite well, considering with our cafeteria sales. You saw, you know, approximately twenty-four thousand dollars in cafeteria sales for the month of October. One of the things you heard Ms. Gabriel speak about, that we talked about in our finance committee meeting, and these two are just coincidental with the, with the packet you received, is our contract with Chartwells does come to its current conclusion at the end of this year. We've had a very successful relationship with them for the past five years. I am going to a training in January, because the RFP process is governed by the USDA, and I do have to go to that training and make sure I'm following their guidelines in that particular RFP process. And so we will really kind of engage in that process probably beginning February, March, and hopefully move forward with terminations for April and May. The promotional materials that you have here were provided by Chartwells and Mr. Sal Rizzo. We have a fantastic relationship with them. He actually provided these not knowing that I would be sharing with all of you that we're going on to RFP, so I don't want that to be misconstrued. But we do think this is a valuable resource for you as board members to have, if you ever have questions or are asked to highlight how our food services are. Mr. Rizzo and, you know, his assistant, Tommy, are really responsive to any feedback that he might have, so you can certainly provide any feedback regarding food services to either building principals or directly to my office as well regarding our services with Chartwells. And then finally, grants continue to be utilized to supplement the operating budget whenever possible.
Anybody have any questions about Chartwells?
Christian, when's the contract out for bid? The food service?
When is it?
When is it, when is it out for bid?
Will likely go out February, March.
Okay, to start when?
To start the next school year.
Okay, all right.
Everybody's going to ask about lax samples, nothing?
We'll get them.
Is that on the table?
I'm saying, I'm just suggesting.
Hi, it's not a question, it's a comment on the transfers. I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Romanelli. I appreciate that we are participating in math counts. As a former math counts kid myself, I still have the sunglasses. It comes in really, really handy. So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Romanelli.
I appreciate that.
On that scene, I'd like to thank Patrick, Melinda, Christian and your team, everybody who's involved with the bus contract. It's, it's another large, large chunk of work that is not easily gone through. There's hundreds of minute details in every contract, and I know they're doing their best to fairly judge each contract on their own merit, but as they do that, they still have to compare contract to contract to contract, which makes it very difficult. So I know you guys are spending a ton of time on it, and the board appreciates it, and we look forward to Wednesday, sitting down and getting through the bulk of it and trying to, trying to narrow that down. So I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers.
I make a motion?
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So moved. Come on. There you go. We're going to move into the second report. What am I missing? Anthony? See, we moved it up there like I asked, right? We're gonna move into the uh second report. What am I missing? Anthony. See, we moved it up there like I asked, right? Anthony, apologies, my friend.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope your week is going well. I would like to first thank and celebrate the success of our first ever special education resource fair that we held on October twenty-third. At the high school, we welcomed over twenty-five vendors that evening. It was wonderful to see families come together from all grade levels. It was excellent and wonderful to see elementary families coming to see what is available and what resources are out there to help build their community and also build our community as a whole. The families that attended found this evening very informative and valuable to help support their child's learning journey and also understand and determine more deeply what supports are available within our community at this point. To complement our resource fair in the spring, we will host a post-secondary college and university fair. This focus will, this will be a primary focus on students who receive special education services and/or have a 504 plan. We will be inviting admissions counselors along with accessibility resource officers to come in and help and share more information about what that process looks like to make the process for moving forward a little more seamless and also empower our students to know what they should be looking for at each school, what works for them, what might not work for them and how we can help support them moving forward. More details will follow in the coming months. And lastly, something very wonderful. This week, we celebrate the National School Psychology Awareness Week. So a big thank you to all of our school psychologists that help not only to support our students but families on a daily basis. Um as a district, we are very thankful to have at least one school psychologist in each building. Or at the high school, we have two and even three at sometimes depending upon the program. It is the most amazing asset to our students to help them moving forward as they go through their journey. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
I just want to say that I was able to stop by the resource fair and it was wonderful. I mean, I went to every table and I spent the entire time talking to all the vendors and they just had a wealth of information for anybody who decided to attend. So um thank you to you and I know Laura DeSanto put in a lot of work for that event. So thank you to Laura um and to, I saw her staff there as well that night. So thank you to everybody that made that happen because it was very valuable for for our families. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Now we're gonna move on to public comment. Thanks. Thanks again, Anthony. Um so a public comment, anybody has a public comment that has to do with the agenda? Um please come up and.
Hi, Diana. What's up, my own friend Brian? Um I have a question about the accountability index. Um what happens, so when you, when you talk about the participation going below ninety-five percent, does that Sback testing participation?
Or SAT or NGSS. It could be any of the state assessments.
And what if that goes below ninety-five percent? What happens?
We move down a category rank or the specific school does and so we get thanked for that.
And and what is the category? What, being in the, in the, you know, category one or category two, does it grant, does the state grant the district more funds? Is that how it works? No?
No, just a a measure.
Just a measure. Okay. Um so I guess my question is also, what are we giving up in order to get these higher rankings? Because I, I know that um we're teaching to the test, right? I mean, that's really, I understand now, is it true that in elementary schools that the teachers are given um are required um, they have to, they have to follow the districts basically do what you say each, for each schedule? Like you have a schedule for the teachers and they all have to follow that schedule?
It's a, yeah.
Curriculum and scope and sequence.
Well, no, not curriculum, like after lunch, they have to learn writing and you know, are they given an actual schedule?
So they're given an outline, sure. Yeah. What certain amount of times there's.
Is that new this year? I was told it was new this year.
Maybe in some buildings, different administrators handle it differently.
I was told it was just from the district, that each elementary school has to, the teachers have to follow a schedule now?
Well, with the new curriculum, we need to make sure that each of the components are taught with the amount of time. So it is a little bit of adjustment there.
And there's always been like a language arts block, a mathematics block, a certain amount for each of those things.
Right.
They have specials and stuff.
But is it scheduled at that certain time for each classroom?
So sometimes it's dependent on when other services can provide support. So um so yeah, they may be scheduled at a specific time if there's intervention block there or something like that where our coaches or interventions may need to serve students, sure.
And what if the teacher finds that it's not a good fit for their classroom?
They can communicate that with their coordinators and principals.
Okay. Um here's another question regarding the testing, Sback specifically. Parents are allowed to opt out their children, correct?
So it is, they are. It is not something that's written into statute, uh but parents can.
And I'm asking because a parent was denied. Um I wasn't denied when I opted my children out and I'm wondering why they were denied.
I can explain that.
So so you can't, but you can deny? And what happens if the?
No, we've never, to my knowledge, the district hasn't denied anyone. Uh when it comes up to the administrators, they most likely will have a conversation with us or um they will just allow the student to be put in a different setting during that time.
Okay, I'll have that parent contact you because they they were denied. And so when they take the, um when they're testing or practicing the test, if they fail that test, they have to retake it the next day, that practice test?
Are we talking?
Sback.
Sback, practice test, do they have to retake it? I think it's at the discretion of the teacher how they want to go about the preparation for the assessment.
Okay.
And so there's, and I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing, but there are set of tests um called IABs which are like practice tests.
Right.
And often the teachers will give them, we set times that you're gonna perhaps do a specific IAB in math as a check-in for material learned. And then often the teacher will model it or reteach it to the class as like a learning opportunity. But I can't speak to, you know, individual retakes and such.
Okay. Um I'm just concerned because it just, I had a middle school conference and um seventh grade, they were teaching the states of the United States because they don't, he told me they no longer teach that. They no longer focus on social studies in elementary school because there's so much preparation for Sback testing. That's what I meant by what are we losing by preparing and taking all these tests. Um so I hope, you know, this category, you know, being in a one category or two category, if it doesn't really mean anything other than, you know, being a number one or number two on a piece of paper, can we back off of that preparation and allow the teachers to teach what they used to teach the kids?
But the teachers are aligning their instruction to this, the core curriculum, the state source standard, the state uh core standard. So that's what we're expected to teach. So um if those happen to align to the assessment, sure, that's that's the idea. But um you know, the state is, the state standards are what all school districts are expected to to follow.
Right. But not the, not the Sback testing. Preparation for it is not part of that standardized?
Well, in order to, so the Sback testing, I mean, it serves more than one purpose. Taking the Sback test or NGSS, there's also formatting, like it's it's difficult to, for kids to take that test. It's not only a content, but how to take the test. So if you're learning how to take it and that's part of what the teachers are going through, sometimes they'll do it full class, sometimes they'll do it individually. But um understanding the format is also going to help you do well on the assessment too, so.
Okay. I just, it's not important to me that my child does well on Sback or, I mean, they don't take them anymore, but um thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good.
God bless Mrs. Miller who tried to teach me handwriting in first grade. I just had a question for Mr. Solomon. Um is it going to be ancient Greek or is it modern Greek language that you were speaking about for the, uh, because you had mentioned that they were going to be adding a language to the curriculum?
So we don't have a Greek teacher, so we're not adding that. It's a um dual enrollment agreement with a university. So if students self-select and wanted to take it, we have a a plan in place with um the guidance department and the high school, they would take it on their own. So they would select um from a a group of courses that the university would be offering, the college would be offering.
Okay. Do you know if it's ancient Greek or modern Greek?
I think there's a combination actually. Um so I couldn't be sure. It will depend on what the university's offering in their distance learning opportunities.
Okay. No, I'm just, I'm happy to hear it. Um I don't know how many of you remember Mrs. Bingham and Mrs. DiGennaro. They really brought home like ancient Greek, etymology, Latin and from someone who struggled in elementary, struggled in middle school and then took those courses and it like reopened my understanding of language arts, my understanding of science, math and a lot of courses. I was really happy to hear that and I'm happy that we're expanding language opportunities. So I was just curious because they are way too different books entirely, but I am happy to hear it. I really hope we can expand our language opportunities. I know that costs money and budget season's coming, but one day, one day. But I am happy to hear it and I was just curious because they are two total different playbooks.
And we still have a robust Latin.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And I actually remember when Mrs. Bingham was teaching, um who our current Latin teacher is, um started training her and I'm so happy to see it and I'm happy that we're expanding because Mrs. Bingham not only taught Latin, she did ancient Greek within the Latin class at the same time. So seeing that also possibly come back, I think is a great thing for our students and I was just curious if it was ancient or modern. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Barrett. I'm, I live at uh One Crestview Drive and I'd like to commend this board as well as, uh, most importantly, the the teachers and the students. It's really nice to hear uh such optimistic and and promising results. That's, that's really great news. Uh just one question for the board. I know that this certainly represents forward progress, but I'm sure that um not only this town, but all towns are still experiencing some degree of impact of the the pandemic in terms of an overall um lag on on uh learning. And so I'm just wondering where in the, you know, very big picture, do you think that the town stands in terms of catching up to where we were pre-pandemic in terms of how our students are doing?
We're still, we're still, as you said, we're still coming out of it to a point. Um but these measures that we've shared the last two meetings between the accountability scores and our and our Sback score scores do show that we are making progress to getting back to where we were. Uh you know, our absenteeism and our dropping each year, our graduation rate is very strong. So those are indicators that we continue to in show improvement on. So I, I think every year we see a closer return to where we were. Um to be honest with you, Ms. Barrett, we don't speak about the pandemic as much as we used to. We're, we're, we spent maybe the year, year, eighteen months coming off of it, really looking behind us to see um where those gaps were. We spent the last year, year and a half or so really looking forward and and kind of put that behind us to tell you the truth.
Yeah, well, I know there was concern about the behavioral part.
Right. And what I was gonna say, what we haven't put behind us are a lot of the supports that we have in place for students that I think are helping us to continue to accelerate and move forward.
What we've had in place from coming off the pandemic has never changed. Um the extra supports and whatnot, we've never lessened that.
Lessened any, right.
I was gonna say, we, we probably have greater need. We're just, we're putting into that greater need to make sure that we're accelerating forward.
Right. No, it's, it's never a question of whether you've slacked off. It's really just a question of those kids that really went through critical developmental stages during the pandemic. Um they're gonna need a lot more in order to get back to just where they need to be.
And this is not academics as well.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So I, I do have just one, one question. I know that the, the chair had asked that I, I direct my questions to the board, but I think ultimately this is gonna be a question for, for Christian and and um Patrick. So I appreciate getting uh all of the um accounting of the, the budget also included with, with the agenda. So I'd like to address the very, the second line item in the budget, which of course is the largest line item in the budget, and that is the uh the teachers' salaries. And that's about twenty-three million dollars. Um and it represents about a little over thirty-six percent of, of your total budget. So um we're currently in November, so uh this, this accounting represents through the end of October. So that's four months into the year, four out of twelve is one-third or thirty-three percent. So in theory, the various expenditure line items should, should be around thirty-three percent. Of course, there's gonna be variability. There's gonna be some expenditure line items like insurance where you pay everything upfront. There're gonna be others like various contracts that you pay in, in increments. But something like the teacher salaries, these are, you know, uh something that should be very predictable and probably pretty steady from month to month. Um this is something that, that I've looked at over the last few months because I, something kind of jumped out at me. Last month, um this particular line item, rather than being in the twenty-five percent range, was at seven point seven percent. And this month, um it has jumped up to nineteen point four percent, which is a lot closer to thirty-three percent, but still quite a bit behind that. And I'm just wondering if you have any explanation for why this particular line item would not be close to where you'd expect it to be for this point?
Yeah.
Hi, how are you? Sure.
One of the, the unique pieces that happened um last summer was the district actually shifted our payroll to um ADP as our payroll vendor. Prior to that, and we had Paycom prior to that, but then we were actually embedded directly in the Munis system. So one of the benefits of when you run your salary out of Munis is the accounting is always dead on, if you will. So when you look at this particular report, for example, tomorrow we have a payroll, we have to then take that payroll file from the ADP vendor and load it into Munis. Then it subtracts off of that. So I, your, your observation is accurate when you're looking at the nineteen point four percent. Uh but for example, that's gonna continue, that'll drop again and actually drop considerably again in December, for example, where it's not as consistent when we have the first large payout of all of our stipends that will also hit that particular line. So there is a little bit of catch-up and lag. I will, I'll be very transparent as we have to load the ADP file into the Munis report so that it's constantly generating. So yes, that's roughly, um I actually don't think the last payroll from um October was loaded just yet when we printed this, but I can find that out.
Okay. So, so this might really not be through the end of October.
I will double check that for you just to make sure the October payroll was in fact loaded. It's a cumbersome process, but if you follow up with you directly.
And, and I thought, well, maybe, you know, some of the, uh, the grants that we have, which do actually have lines for both state and federal grants, have lines for teachers, but we really haven't had any year-to-date actuals um for that as well. So, so again, it, it just concerns me because this is something that seems to, year over year, lag, lag, lag. Then we get to the end of April, there's somewhere around sixty percent with only two months left in the fiscal year. And then somehow, in that last two months, there's this dramatic uptick. Um and, and I, I can't quite figure out exactly because we don't, you know, we don't actually see what happens in those last two months, um why you would have that enormous increase for something that really should be a steady, uh, you know, salary, obviously.
Is there something with the summer pays?
Right. And we've talked about this before, but please address it again.
Yeah, we also, we're also at the end of that. Teachers can elect to have their summer pay ballooned or paid out. So we have to, you know, for that as well. So that's typically why you see that big jump because we have to encumber all of that money to then pay out over the summer for those teachers who would like to pay out.
Right, right. But again, you know, I, I've looked at this too. At the, by the end of April, um we might have spent for, you know, the entire budget even, um for this particular line item, thirteen million dollars for ten months. And then somehow in the last two months, we spend another nine million dollars. That proportionally doesn't make sense to me in terms of just covering, uh, say, for, you know, the, the summer months, uh, as an example. So, so I just wondered if, if there was some way to have the two different systems line up so that, you know, we can kind of see it, you know, in, in real time. That would be really helpful. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Christian, when are stipends paid out? They're paid out multiple times a year, right?
Some, yes. It kind of depends on large, it's the first paycheck in December and then it's February.
Some, yes, it kind of depends on where it's, the first paycheck in December, and then it's February is the second one.
So there, there are a couple of different things at play here, like it's not a fair assumption to say that's a 12-month year. Because schools are closed for the summer in some cases. Some teachers get payouts, some, some administrators get payouts, some don't. So like, I think we can probably provide, like, the standard pacing of the teacher payout line, but there is gonna be volatility in there, and I don't think it's a safe mathematical assumption to say that it should be smooth over the course of 12 months.
And in real time would be very difficult, if not impossible. Anybody else? Come on up.
I wanted to talk about the policy read-throughs that you do, like monthly or... It's kind of hard to like, as a public, member of the public, it's kind of hard to understand the context of the policies that you're reading through. Like, why are you reading through them? Is it a new policy? Is it an amendment to a policy? Is there a statute or some sort of legal requirement that's causing this to occur? I mean, I know you do some kind of regular sort of review of them. So I'm kind of, I'm hoping that perhaps there's a way to, to do it so that the public is more aware of the nature of, of the discussion. Because I know you bring it up, and then you say, well, are we all in favor of it? And everybody says, yeah, we're in favor of it, and it passes. Which brings me to the next thing, which is, if you go and look at the policies online, I don't know if they're all up to date. I don't know, I, I certainly have not seen like where there's revisions in the policy where it, like, like what we see in our statutes. And we look at the statute and says, well, this is how it started, and this is what changed, and this is what it is now. I think that would be really, really helpful for, for us in the public to be able to follow that and see, like, why are these things changing? What, you know, what's the motivation or impetus behind it?
What, what you see is supposed to be what we're reading. That's supposed to be a one-for-one, so whatever you read is what we're discussing. So what I ask for, and all these policies have to get read through, and they're just in a loop. Okay, they're all in a loop. So when I say, hey, first read, we have to read a particular policy. So all the members will read that, and then we'll come back and I'll say, second read, and then I'll ask for questions. And then some will say, oh, hey, in this particular policy, what does, what does truancy mean as opposed to tardiness? Or some, or some such question. And then we discuss it here in public in full view as to, do we want to make a change? Is that any clarification or not? And we'll decide right here, no, that doesn't, or I think that's gonna be fine. And we've had these discussions out loud about dress code and several other policies over the years. So everything that you hear that we would want to make a change to, excuse me, vote on, is held publicly right here. So, so we say, okay, we want to change the word tardy to truly, just as an example. And then we'll take a vote on it here, delegate adding it to the policy. That policy won't be rewritten now for, it goes in the back of the loop and asks them all the way back around, unless there is a specific reason that we need to reopen that policy. So you'll be able to, that's why I say it's policy number, 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 so that the public can look it up and become comfortable with what's written on that, or at least, at least familiar.
You're saying the policy's already posted that you're talking about?
Yes.
So when you're approving it, it's already been posted?
It's already posted now. So when I ask them to read one, the policy that you'll be able to pull up is the same policy that we're reading. And then if anybody has a question about it, or wants to make a change, or makes a proposed change, we talk about it right here, and it's either agreed upon or left alone. And then that will go to a second reading, and we'll say, okay, we want to pass this, including this particular change, if there's a change. If there's no change, then I'll just ask for approval. So that will be read, understood that everybody's happy with it, second reading, now we've made sure, and now it gets passed as it was without change. And if there's change, we will make note at that time, and then it gets added to, and then put back in the cycle of, you look at it.
I'm just, it seems like, so between the first and second readings, you're making changes and posting those too, or?
Well, the change, any change that is made is discussed here at the table. It's never, we don't have, like, phone calls right now saying, hey, this particular policy needs this line item changed. So everything is done here in public view. So 90 percent of the time, probably a lot more than that, there are no real changes made. We read, we reread, we approve. So you'll see a lot of motions, hey, let's, you know, three, four of them, and then three or four of them again, and then motion to approve, three or four of them, and then we'll just keep moving forward. So any changes, you'll know about right here.
What about when it's a new, a new policy? Like a, a new section to the policy?
Which would be a, a change to an existing policy?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, change to an existing policy is made right here, voted on right here, and then added. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Capola, any revisions are not posted online until they're officially approved by the board? And then, so the final, if that was what you were asking, the, the final approval is on, is on the website?
The final approval?
Yeah, nothing, nothing really before that, unless it's an old policy from, I think the most, the oldest ones we have are around 2015-ish, and that's, we're trying to update periodically.
Right. So any changes made here, out loud, for everybody, then it's posted after it's voted on and approved here.
Is it, would it be unreasonable to, to have the revisions, like, included? Like, strike through the old wording and put the new wording in, or?
Oh, you're saying read the old wording in, kind of redline it, and then make the change?
Similar to what you would see in legal statute, like...
I, I, you understand what you're saying. I know, I know exactly what he's saying, but I don't know how...
I'm not sure if we would put it online. It might be something that we could include in the board packet, which is made, like, what we make public to the town.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So it's, you say where we started.
He's saying if he adds it, it may be more difficult to add it online, but if we add it to this, this is public record.
Okay.
You can see where it goes.
Is that, is that enough of what you're looking for?
As long as there's a way to see what it was and where it's gonna be for the public, that would be, that would be helpful.
And, and I can be more clear when, when presenting some, whether it's a revision or a new policy moving forward. So you know if it's already posted online and this is just an update, or it's a brand-new policy coming to the board.
Thank you.
No problem. Anybody else? All right, before I close the meeting, I'd just like to thank, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Spend some time with your family and friends. Enjoy it. I have a motion to adjourn the November 14, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.